In person or on the phone, you may call eight five five nine two five two eight zero one and enter meeting code one zero seven four eight. And then press star three to join the queue. It's your opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes on any topic in a professional and respectful manner. Once you're recognized, please share your name and where you're from. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Welcome prosecutor.
Thank you very much Chair, Vice Chair, our Vice Chair Pro Tem is not here, but members of the commission. If I could just have a couple of minutes, I want to just make a couple of remarks regarding budget, which is one of the things that you're going to be presented on, the Administrator's Recommended Budget here later today, and I know that you've been working on. First, I want to say thank you. I don't always agree with the decisions that are made by one or more of you or the recommendations that are made, but I do know that all of you take seriously those responsibilities. And not just that you take those decision-making responsibilities seriously, but the way in which you do it is an example that I think other political bodies here in this state and across, here in this state and across the country would learn from. The cooperative and considerate process in which you make decisions about the budget and other things is something that not only do I appreciate, but I think others could learn from. Second, with regard to the budget, I want to ask that you put employees first, that you prioritize employees of the county throughout the county over discretionary spending. And I say that because you know what I know. Everyday costs are increasing for all of our employees at escalating and continue to escalate, right? The dollars that they have aren't going as far as they did. By prioritizing those employees, you help to make their everyday lives just a little bit easier. I'd ask that you think about a number that's more than what I expect you to think about. I'd ask that you consider cost of living increases for all employees of four percent, not anything less, because the reality is, is that anything less isn't keeping up with their increased costs. A couple of things Prosecutor's Office specific. You were provided a list of open positions. Those positions, that information was gathered at one point in time, it was provided to you at another point in time, and here we are later on down the road. Two of those positions for Assistant Prosecuting Attorneys are dependent on high crime funding, state grant funding. We have been waiting for that funding to stabilize before we took action with regard to those positions. Four of those APA positions that were open aren't. Two of them have already been filled with employees that started last week. We're currently interviewing multiple candidates for the other two. With regard to legal assistance, we've already been working with administration and finance and position creation eliminations to take two part-time employees and a full-time employee and instead morph that into one supervisory employee that's desperately needed out at our Gulf Road facility. There are no positions on that list that we do not need. I referenced high crime state grant funding. Two years ago, as you know, the county got, County Prosecutor's Office, not the county, Prosecuting Attorney's Office got a million dollars in state funding. Last year, there was another approximately one million dollars in the state appropriations for Kalamazoo County. That money, because of language in the budget bill and the interpretation by the Department of Treasury has been held up. There was a supplemental Senate appropriations bill that passed the Senate that has been held up in the House. There is now a House Bill, House Bill forty-three eighty-one, that fixes the problem that the Department of Treasury has. And I expect that in the next couple of weeks, when we finally get a state budget bill, that there will be again appropriations for counties like Kalamazoo from the state to the Prosecutor's Office. I would remind you that those appropriations are contingent on a maintenance or continuity of funding. The language as it is, has been, will be, no less than. A cut to county prosecutors budgets jeopardizes the funding from the state. Lastly, Prosecutor by Carpel. You haven't heard me say those words here before because you didn't need to, or PBK. When I took office in two thousand and thirteen, the adult case tracking, juvenile case tracking, case management software that we use, that is used around the state, was on its last It seemed to us prosecutors to make much more sense for us to deal with this collectively than for us to individually be going to our counties and having Kalamazoo saying, we can't afford anything, or we can afford this, but not that, and Oakland County saying something different, and Calcasca being left to their own devices. Prosecutor's Offices and our organization PM went to the state and said, we have a problem that only you can fix across the state. May I? We have a problem that only you can fix across the state. The state then agreed with us and we did several vendor demos. Ultimately, the county prosecutors agreeing on this product called Prosecutor by Carpel. Beginning last year, County Prosecutor's Offices, to Prosecutor by Carpel. We began that process in February of this year. This week, we began trainings for law enforcement. At the end of this week, my office will undergo two days of training. And on Monday, we will have a new case management and document management system here in Kalamazoo County that is not going to end up in me.
Prosecutor, additional information on the software that you need is valuable to the board. I appreciate follow-up with the board additional time.
One sentence, if I may, one sentence. The bill is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The cost of Kalamazoo is zero. It was paid for by the state without me having to come to you for that money, and I hope that you will take that into consideration.
Thank you prosecutor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Dina, do we have anyone online? I know we're having some technical issues this evening, so appreciate everyone's efforts and patience. All right.
Chair, we do not have anyone online.
Thank you, Dina. All right, we will move forward from public comment. As we let folks, oh, I see our Metro presentation is up. Okay, so I'm going to go to item three. It's an opportunity for the Kalamazoo Transportation Authority, the KCTA, and Central County Transportation Authority update. We'll welcome Executive Director Sean McBride from Metro Transit. Welcome to you. Mr. McBride, welcome. We have ten minutes on the agenda this evening. We have a full set, so I appreciate sharing information and your timeliness. Thank you.
Right there. Can you hear me? All right, great, thanks. Good afternoon, I'm Kurt Artema. I'm here with Sean McBride, our Executive Director at Metro. I'm currently serving as Chair of the CCTA and KCTA. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I also want to say thank you for the support that your board has provided to our two boards in populating the boards with a group that really works well together. I think many of you know the history of the two boards. This was brought together seven or eight years ago to address kind of the growing needs of transit across the region, and they've been brought under one umbrella from a branding standpoint and also operationally. So, and part of that is the work of this board and populating those two boards with great people. So, appreciate that, and we're excited about some of the things we're working on. Sean's going to get into some of those. Metro Link, you maybe have seen those vehicles out on the roads, smaller vehicles, on-demand, almost an Uber-type service that's out there. In addition to Metro Connect, which has been around for many years but continues to grow, and then the line-haul buses as well. And I'll say one quick note, I was up at the Bronco Bash a couple of weeks ago and had a chance to be there with some staff from Metro and other board members, and it's amazing to see just the lines of people coming through with questions about Metro and the kind of pure need that's out there within the community from many populations, including students at WMU, and that was apparent for the time that I was out there. So, Sean, want to run through a quick update? Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you board for having us here tonight. Well, I'll give a brief update on public transit services here in Kalamazoo County, and then we do have a millage coming up on November fourth that I'd like to share the information about. One of the things that we realized during the, as a result of the pandemic, is that everyone's mobility needs and challenges are very different. And as the public transit provider for Kalamazoo County, we want to provide mobility solutions for all. We've really been working on our mix and quality of service, so we meet a variety of needs. Last year, we did almost two million trips for our, for the community in our core four key services. And since inception in nineteen sixty-seven, Metro has provided over a hundred and twenty-five million rides to Kalamazoo County. One of the main reasons that people use public transit is for economic growth and mobility. The main reason is to get to jobs. Forty-one percent of our riders on the Fix-Rout Bus System are getting to work, eighteen, sixteen percent to school opportunities, shopping, medical appointments, and social opportunities are the next key reasons. And this enables them to be, those individuals riding the bus, to be economically successful and allows our community to be an economic vital place, providing opportunities. The reality is about ninety percent of our riders on the Fix-Rout Bus System have limited mobility options, are using it as their main source of transportation around the community. And data shows that about fifteen percent in any community don't have access to a car. So we're the solution to getting people to job schools, work, medical appointments. Last year on the Fix-Rout Bus System, we did one point seven million rides, that's about four thousand seven hundred and sixty trips per day. Our Fix-Rout Bus System's affordable, affordable a buck fifty per trip, seventy-five cents if you're a senior citizen or individual with disabilities, and we're accessible. All our buses have ramps, lifts, voice enunciators for those that may be hearing impaired. And we really take pride in our community partnerships that we have. Chair Artema talked about our partnership with Western Michigan University, with the school year, starting with the Kalamazoo Public School System. We have a partnership with them and the Foundation for Excellence, where students, five hundred students have access to a youth mobility pass that gives them unlimited ridership using Metro. And we do really take pride in the value-added service that we provide, public safety options that in the middle of the night, we're often called to come out and help in the evacuation of, a couple of years ago was an Amtrak train that was stalled out in Ashdodah. The snow event several years ago, and on I-94, we had six buses out there. Our next biggest service is Metro Connect, a hundred and thirty-five thousand rides. Anyone can go anywhere in Kalamazoo County using our on-demand service. It's twelve dollars a regular fare, and there are four dollars if you're a senior citizen or individual with disability. One of the unique services we have is working, working with veterans groups to get people out to the VA hospital. We'd run daily trips back and forth to the VA hospital. Our newest service is a pilot program called Metro Link. It's really taken off. We have, we have three zones that we operate in, and we've done about eighty-one thousand rides since inception of April of twenty-four. We've expanded those zones through a competitive grant that we won through the state of Michigan, so now we serve all corners of the metro urban area. And it's affordable, it's a dollar fifty per trip, and it works much like Uber, that you schedule a trip using a phone app. Within about fifteen minutes, people can be picked up, and it works kind of two ways. Either you can be dropped off to a destination, a point-to-point destination within the zone, or to a Fix-Rout Bus Stop, where you have access to the whole Fix-Rout public transit system. And these two charts show the positive growth in the system with ridership. We're doing about five, seven thousand rides per month, and that will continue to grow as students come back this fall. And we have about six, five hundred unique individuals riding. Both existing riders continue to grow and new riders. We have a group of new riders that tried each car. And one of our partnerships is with you all, working, working with you all. We are providing services out to Pavilion Estates to help with the mobility of, of those that suffered from the tornado a couple summers ago. We're averaging about forty to fifty rides per month out of Pavilion Estates, so it's been very successful, and we, we expect that to grow too. Exciting stuff, the budget. We just approved our twenty-seven point five million dollar budget. We're funded in four key areas, fares, state revenues, federal, federal transit administration, grants, and through voter-approved millages. We have two voter-approved millages, one's the countywide millage that funds Metro Connect and the urban millage, which I'll talk about momentarily. The urban millage, we are going to have an election on November fourth. It's for five years, twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty, and this millage specifically funds the Fix-Rout Bus System and the Metro Link Service, and it's limited to the urban area, which encompasses the CCTA boundary, so it's all of the city of Kalamazoo, city of Parchment, city of Portage, Comstock Township, Kalamazoo Township, and Ashdodah Township's precincts three through nine. The millage is, the request is for one point one mills, and this is an increase from the existing millage, which is point nine mills. And the question is, why is it increased? And there's three main factors to that. One is to maintain the existing levels of services, the inflationary impacts that we're feeling as organizations and individuals is impacting our organization. For, for example, a Fix-Rout Bus that we were paying, pre-pandemic, we were paying about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per bus. Today, we're paying seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the same bus. It's to, the Metro Link Service is to continue that pilot program, the Metro Link Pilot. It's been very successful, and it meets a, a need in our community that cannot be met by the Fix-Rout Bus System. And then number three is concerns with state funding. Were public transit fundings tied to road funding? The amount that's been going to public transit has been decreasing significantly year over year since twenty twenty-one. There was a small blip using federal funds in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-four, but this is continuing to decline unless there's changes to how roads and bridges and public transit are funded. I was in Lansing last week talking with our state representatives and state senators about, as we're looking at road funding, that public transit also needs to be considered a benefit from the changes to road funding. The reality is that not everyone can use a car and does use a car in public transit is their way to be mobile in the community. So moving forward, you know, a couple of things. One is, if there are groups or any areas that we can come out, Metro can come out and educate about the millage, we'd love to do that. We'd love your support on just getting the word out. And then as an organization, we're focused on providing mobility solutions for all, continue to be innovative in how we grow ridership and enhance the rider experience, growing and cultivating community partnerships, and building public confidence through service excellence. I was just talking to our, we have a series of driver meetings over the next couple of days, so I'm meeting with all those groups and spending about twenty to thirty minutes talking about each individual's role in providing excellent service to the community and how we can partner on doing that. So, thank you for your time today, and we're close to our ten minutes.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Mr. McBride, is there any questions or anything from commissioners? All right, Vice Chair and Commissioner Gisler.
Really quick, the number of precincts in the upcoming millage election, that's the same number as the previous, are really, really close, right? There's just one, one precinct difference.
The one change is that Comstock Township added one precinct back that wasn't in the previous, so.
And secondly, when does the other millage run out if something bad happens? Gosh forbid, but you know, downturn economically right before the election like happened in two thousand and eight, or something, something bad happens and this, for some reason doesn't pass, are we still, do we still have the point nine for how long?
It ends at the end of this year, so we, Public Act one ninety-six limits one election per year for public transit millages like this, so we'd have to go out to the voters at the first opportunity in twenty twenty-six. Unfortunately, the other millage for the KCTA is up next year, and that will probably be on the ballot in November of next year.
So, basically, this is our one shot this November?
One shot. We also have an opportunity in the spring of next year to put it out before, just due to the timing of millage collection, so we usually collect it in July and December.
Okay, that, that makes me feel, thank you.
Commissioner Gisler?
Thank you Chair. I don't vote for many millages, and I'm sure that people mainly know that. I'll probably support your millage because I was a naysayer for public transit decade ago, and the way you guys have run it, I think is absolutely commendable. You're, you're providing a service that's needed by a lot of people, and you're doing a great job of it, and I, I salute the job that Kurt, now you're the, the Chair after a series of Chairs that were first-rate. And when you were first hired, Sean, I thought you, that was a bad move, but I'm now a big fan, so you guys have done good. Thank you very much.
Well, hopefully you feel the love in that comment, too. Commissioner Morell?
I was just about to say, I'm in the middle of my second round of the four agreements. Do not take on that. Wonderful job. No, and I will support as well.
Thank you so much for taking the time with us this afternoon. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move to our next item. We're going to trust review of accounts payable, payroll disbursements. We'll welcome Finance Director Post. Welcome Director.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, Board Commissioners. This evening, we have an accounts payable claims list totaling two million, four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. It's presented for review of this total. The Board of Commissioners asked to approve claims totaling two million, one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Payroll disbursements totaling five million, two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and three cents are presented for the September second special, September twelfth general, and September fifteenth elected payrolls. We welcome any questions from the board at this time.
Thank you Director. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you Director, appreciate you. Excellent. Okay, we'll move next to our monthly investment report. We'll welcome Chief Deputy Treasurer Tyler White.
Thank you Chair. As of August thirty-first, the county's investment portfolio has a par value balance of a hundred and forty-seven million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, and a market value of a hundred and forty-seven million, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. That leaves a mark-to-market variance between par and market values of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. We do have an improvement in our market values, that gap of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and nine cents from July. As a reminder, mark-to-market variance only impacts our bottom line if we were to liquidate our portfolio. Strategy is to hold assets to maturity to avoid realized losses. Like I say every month, please don't liquidate our portfolio. For the month of August, our portfolio earned five hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents on an average daily balance of a hundred and forty-five million, eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. It's an effective rate of return on our investments of four point two one percent. It's inclusive of all realized gains and losses on sales maturities, as well as amortization of investment premiums and discounts. Of the total five hundred and eighteen thousand that we earned, two hundred and eighty-six thousand relates to general fund and budget stabilization investment pools. All of that is available for county use. For the year, our portfolio has earned four million, eight hundred and six thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents on an average daily balance of a hundred and sixty-two million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, fifty-seven dollars and ten cents for our year-to-date effective rate of return of four point four five percent. This is also inclusive of amortization, premiums, discounts, realized gains, losses. And of the four point eight million we've earned to date, two million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and four dollars and forty-three cents relates to the general fund, forty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, forty-nine relates to budget stabilization. In short, we're on track to earn seven point two million for twenty twenty-five. Of what we've earned so far, it's just over two point nine million dollars for the general fund. If we assume the rest of the year follows that trend, on track to earn seven point two million, we will see what today's Federal Reserve Meeting calls for. We're assuming a basis point cut of twenty-five basis points, a quarter percent. That meeting is going on right now, so we'll keep you posted as soon as we learn. Inflation over the last twelve months as of August was two point nine percent. This is up from two point seven percent in July. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, our four point four five percent rate of return is higher than inflation. We experienced a net one point five five percent net gain in our purchasing power. Inflation was spread across following categories. Food is up three point two percent. Energy commodities or fuel is down six point two percent. Energy services or utilities up seven point seven percent, of which electricity is up six point two, gas is up thirteen point eight, shelters up three point six percent, transportation services up three point five percent, medical services up four point two percent, and other commodities, so vehicles, apparel, medical commodities, up one and a half percent. With all the numbers said, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any from the Commission? Thank you for the overview. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
All right, excellent. We'll move forward to item six, our fiscal year twenty-six budget discussion. Administrator Catlin?
All right, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, Commissioners. This evening, I wanted to provide an update on our, or follow-up rather, on our conversation last meeting on September second with regard to some of the feedback I received and some of that work that we put into curating the official recommendation for this evening that'll be reviewed. Only about two items changed from that recommendation. What we did was increased projections, revenue projections from, or for rather, the marijuana tax, and so we increased that by thirty thousand dollars. And then we also increased our property tax by a half percent, so that increased about, it was roughly about a hundred and forty thousand dollars or something like that. So that left us with a balance to address a few things. One, or a couple of things rather, one was there was a comment related to gun violence, and, and so we baked some funding into the budget in alignment with the Kalamazoo Blueprint for Peace. Any work that is, and that we recommend that is geared towards gun violence should align with that blueprint, because that was a very comprehensive effort that included a lot of stakeholders involved in gun violence and addressing intervention and prevention. The last item that we had comments about were, were the Circuit Courts Operating Budget Increase, their request for that, so we increased them by a substantial amount. So, we included ninety thousand dollars essentially to address gun violence, and then we bumped up the Circuit Courts Operating Budget Increase to a hundred and three thousand, four hundred dollars. And beyond that, everything else remained the same within the PowerPoint, and I apologize that we're having technical difficulties, so we can't show that this evening, but it is within the packet, and we also printed it off for the board. So on slide fourteen, the Commission requested information on what positions were included in the budget, so we have a total of fifteen positions, and then the board also wanted to know where they were at in the process of having their job descrip, job description And then the board also wanted to know where they were at in the process of having their job descrip- job description questionnaires completed. So on slide fourteen, you'll see that we have um seven positions, it appears, that are in that have J D Qs on file. So they would be ready to go October twenty first to post those positions. We have another five positions that are in the process of um uh having their J D Qs reviewed. And we expect that hopefully those will be reviewed and and about the time that the budget is passed or there shortly after so that they can still be posted this year to have individuals start closer to January in twenty twenty six. And then there's one position or two positions rather that uh are they have no J D Q on file because they're union positions and they would need to be bargained through the collective bargaining uh process. And those are two positions out of the Sheriff's Office. So currently, they're asking for technology analysts. That is, that would be a new position. They have uh, I believe, technology specialists that are within uh their their union right now, but they're not uh classified as D nineteen s or D fourteen s. So this position would have to be created and uh bargained through that unit. So um so those are, that that kind of lays out the landscape there of where we're at in the process uh for to address any of those concerns. And uh, that's about all I want to mention on the PowerPoint. The last thing is that we've obviously published the budget book online, so that is live. Uh, some items of note on there is that if you go all the way to the last section in the header and click on supplemental information, there is an update to the fee schedule uh for there are several, well, multiple rather fees that have been updated. We highlighted those for transparency, so you could see how those uh fees either increased or decreased and most of them are increases, if not all of them. So those are out there for transparency. So if you have any questions on those, we can have those departments uh kind of provide rationales for those. And uh, other than that, information's on there for review and feedback. So uh, that's all I have this evening and happy to take any questions.
Commissioners. Commissioner Ray.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question about the ninety thousand dollar um allocation for gun violence. It says transportation. Was that a specific request from somewhere?
So currently, the Commissioner Ray, yes, currently the blueprint blueprint for peace is being um coordinated by the United Way and the Mission uh Transformation Collective. So they're uh spearheading that that uh endeavor and what they're focusing on right now as a group. They found that uh concentrating on goal four, which is transportation, is the best way to kind of move the plan forward in an expeditious way. So that that group has been meeting over the last multi- I mean, multiple months to come up with a a vision and a way forward. And so that's what they felt like uh should be concentrated on for twenty twenty six. So that's where uh our recommendation was just to align with that work and provide funding uh to support the effort.
Commissioner Delu.
Yeah, I, excuse me. I still have an issue with um, you want to fund fifteen brand new positions. And I don't, I first, I keep going back to the court, even though you increased their funding, there's still about twenty five percent of what they say they need just to to meet the basics. And I guess I don't know what where administration is coming from as to I I have to put, how are they gonna survive, I guess? Where are they gonna find the other almost three hundred thousand dollars just to meet their their daily requirements to keep the the courts running? And again, in these fifteen new positions, I think some of them are, you know, we talked about not having bells and whistles, some of them sound like bells and whistles for some of these departments. And again, moving a a grant funded position of the county payroll. And like Vice Chair brought up at our last meeting, the strategic strategic planning for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I just question where's, why we're not funding the courts better? And also, I mean, they had a juvenile program they wanted funded, it's not even on, hasn't even been discussed, which would, I think, benefit the community and the juvenile justice system tremendously. But I don't, I just not comfortable with funding fifteen brand new positions when we can't fund the basics for the court.
Yes, Commissioner Delu, if I may, Chair, so um the recommendation uh has been drafted in consultation with all uh departments, leaders and of the expertise of of administration. And so what do you have before you today is merely a recommendation and the Board of Commissioners is more than welcome to adjust these recommendations. Um, these positions add capacity to departments that need them. Uh, I would not argue that these are bells and whistles. These are positions that will move departments forward. Uh, back in two thousand eight, a lot of positions were eliminated and the county and departments are short staffed. So time and time and again, even during my evaluation process, the board asks, why don't you take off Administrator? Why don't you take time off? Because we don't have enough staff. And anytime I take off, that work has to shift to deputy administrators or other staff within departments. And so we see that within the entire county, including elected offices, departments can't have staff take off when they don't have anyone to carry the workload. So these positions are in an effort to bring departments back up to full staffing so that employees can have work-life balance. Um, so we're not recommending positions that uh that are fluffy in in any manner. They literally add capacity so that staff can have that, maintain that work-life balance. Um, in regard to the uh your question regarding the operating uh budget increases, there are every department, every elected offices uh has had in the past to cut from other line items to address other increases within their operating budgets. I mean, our office had to do it. And so I think while the Circuit Court, right, is asking for that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the tune of that, we can set, we we can address a little bit of that over time, but I I I don't see where in this budget uh we can cut from other things within the recommendation um to uh address their 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 request. And if we do, it just has implications on those items. I know that uh, you know, the strategic plan looks lofty, but the county board invested a lot of time and effort in um drafting that strategic plan in collaboration with all the elected offices, a lot of employees. There's a lot of buying into it. And so if we don't um support it financially, uh, it'll be something that sits on the shelf. And I've heard time and time again, this board does not like plans that sit on the shelf. So there are items in here that cost money to move the county forward within the strategic plan. And if we don't have the funding to do it, then those items just get kicked down the road. So we're kicking the can down the road. So that's kind of where this is coming from. I think there is some movement, we can make some adjustments uh within some of these lines. But um, you know, I I kind of defer to the Commission to uh identify those and then ask me what our opinion is on if you cut from here and what that would do and the implications associated there too, so.
Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have two uh comments, I guess they aren't really questioned so much. Uh, when the first budget uh proposal was put forth a few meetings ago, I noticed uh and it's in the uh the three minute video, which I found very interesting. I I found it very appropriate. The only thing I took issue with, Kevin, was that it started with uh baseline budgeting. You start with what was spent last year and work from there. I just assumed, and I know it's a, it's a complete change around and not many organizations, be they private or governmental, do it. I'd like to see us consider zero-based budgeting, meaning if you've got something last year, that doesn't mean you've got anything starting the next year as we budget. Uh, justify your existence, basically. Uh, and the other uh comment I will make, I I completely concur with uh Dale. The the courts are super important and they are indeed part of one of the main functions of of government. And that is to provide safety and that includes all law enforcement and the courts are kind of the the tail end of the law enforcement. Uh, so I I would hate to see us not come up in some fashion with the money they're asking for. Uh, and we we need to take that out of somewhere else. I don't want to see another village or anything like that. But when we're spending the money we spend annually in a budget and we can't find another three hundred thousand dollars for something as important as part of law enforcement, uh, then I think we're we're being penny wise and pound foolish. Thank you.
I have a Vice Chair and then we'll go to Commissioner Morales.
Um, yeah, thank you very much for this. Um, I'm going through, I saw the budget online. We don't have um, we don't have like the the actual, the line items yet, right? The 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 book, so to speak.
Vice Chair, those are, so we we never present a line item budget like where it talks about supply. But there is, there is a spreadsheet with each budget in each department, so you have to click on it.
Do we have something similar to what we get, for instance, on month monthly reports? So that it'll show like each like department, um, what like one oh one, seven, three, 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 zero, what we've spent, what we we've done? So that would look similar to those?
I believe it's in there. I I think we just need to orient the board to where they are.
Yeah, I probably, I can probably come in and this just went on a couple hours ago, but I'm trying to familiarize myself with it and I'm not computer savvy, so.
Yes, so on the online, if you click on, for example, um, the funds summaries tab, there if, so if you kind of scroll down, there's there's some charts and, you know, and then there's a, it's very probably difficult to see, mine's already expanded, but there's a spreadsheet breakdown for each of those uh tables, and I think that's what you're looking for.
Well, what I'm looking for, for instance, is like strategic issues, restricted reserve and contingencies, what we've budgeted for those three things. Um, for instance, in twenty twenty three, um, we started uh strategic issues. We started at a hundred and twenty five K, um, we amended it to seventy five and we spent seven. Um, twenty four, five sixty four, amended it to four thirty, we spent ninety three. Um, twenty twenty five, we amended it to two forty nine and so far we've spent thirty. Um, we usually have hundreds of thousands of dollars in strategic issues that are carried over every year. Restricted reserves, um, twenty twenty three, we budgeted a million, we spent zero. Twenty four and twenty five, we budgeted fifty K and we spent zero. Um, contingencies, we're usually at about fifteen, ten to fifteen percent of what we budget. Um, we've spent two eighty six so far this year, we've got amended budget at six forty two. Uh, we spent six out of contingencies in twenty four and we amended it to, you know, a hundred twenty six K. Um, so I mean, these are funds that I'm looking at line items, one oh one, seven, seven, three, zero, seven, thirty. Um, that continue, I'm trying to see what we're gonna start with and then look at sort of a history and what we traditionally spend and see how it matches up.
Yeah, I'll I'll speak to the finance team and see if we can make those adjustments.
And thank you very much. And I know that when we switched to munis, it made it kind of difficult to go back before twenty twenty three. We've got twenty three adopted in some of these, but we don't have any actuals. Um, like if we go to expenditures by expense in the budget, we've got all the adopted budgets, but we don't have any of the actuals there. Maybe some of the funds do, but I haven't gone through all of them. Some of them do. But but, you know, I appreciate it. I'm gonna certainly be going through this. As far as positions go, um, I do, um, I mean, I I'm kind of in agreement with Dale on the strategic issues portion of it, but not on the position side of it. Um, I I do agree with you on the positions, this kind of, we've been going through a uh scarcity since, you know, pre-COVID, um, really. Um, and each department has been underfunded and cut, 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 cut. And we need to start looking for ways to to accurately budget so that we can start relieving these uh departments and start putting the money actually into play as opposed on the sidelines. Um, but yeah, I'm I'm gonna certainly be going through this quite array and I'll probably get with you and Ryan after the meeting in between and we'll go through these.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. So uh, thank you for this, Kevin. Um, I'm in agreement with what you have in plan for employees. I think it's really important. My question is, with the state budget cuts that um were proposed by House Republicans to cut millions and millions of dollars in law enforcement, how does that impact us here? I mean, they have state funding for state police and then they had like one point six million um for general public safety. So as we try to fight for that or even if we put this three hundred thousand in play, what the, what do these budget cuts look like in the future to maintain this? Because, I mean, that's a hard impact to law enforcement coming from the state. And as we, as we reimburse the courts, do we reimburse the juvenile, are they a part of that too? So when they um, when we get reimbursed by the state, when we pay them, how does that affect us?
I want to make sure, so wait here, I'll I'll address your first question first. So the the our our budget contemplates very cautious uh numbers around uh the revenue sharing and grants, but we can anticipate everything. So because the budgets aren't aren't complete at the state level, we, I mean, we'll just have to kind of weather that storm when when the time arrives. And I think that's why we've recommended, right, utilizing the twenty five percent uh fund balance ratios that we could have some some dollars there to be able to address some shortfalls. You're uh, so so nonetheless, we've been working with our lobbyists uh to keep close tabs in Michigan Association of Counties. As you know, on the committee of the whole, there's a an emergency resolution to uh obviously oppose the houses uh addition uh or draft of their budget that cuts state revenue sharing to counties by thirty percent. So their, our lobbyist and Mac is working to um get, collect as many of those resolutions to, you know, inform and advise the the House and and other legislators and the other chamber and then the governor's office. So we're hopeful that we're able to um realize the revenue that we're recording for revenue sharing in in this current budget to to create a balanced budget. I I'm not sure I totally follow your question about the courts, I apologize.
So, I mean, the state, don't we get reimbursed? We pay the courts first and then we get reimbursed. How do those, how is that gonna look? So say we take care of our employees first and then next year we start putting more funding into the juvenile courts. What does that look like with these budget cuts that are coming forward? And do we put a pause on our employees? You know, when we talk about juvenile justice, I mean, I met with Judge Schwarmer probably maybe three weeks ago, and they did have some plans to have um like a respite center for, you know, these um juveniles to go to. Nothing really where it's gonna be secure, but to, you know, offset some help. I think when we're looking at juveniles, we really don't have anything in place, no matter how much money we dump into it. They have to meet a certain point system that I don't necessarily agree with because for me, it seems selective for some and not the others, no dis to the courts, but it's just what I've seen personally. So those are my questions on how would, whatever we do first, how are we gonna manage it moving forward?
Oh, okay, so that's a great question. I appreciate the clarification, Commissioner Morales. So um, a couple of things, and this isn't, this is generally how it works. But for the most part, the employees, you know, barring any sort of grant funding issues, are paid by the county hundred percent. Like I said, there's a grant that reimburses, that's different. And then that was, that is contingent then on the state budget. The judges are the ones that I think you're referring to, that we pay a portion of their salary. Um, and then and then a, and then actually all of that is uh reimbursed by the state. So it's kind of bizarre, so they receive a county uh pay paycheck and they receive a state paycheck. It's just kind of, it's a wonky thing, but we pay that and the 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 state reimburses us a hundred percent anyway. We anticipate, uh, and the state has basically told us, right, that um they'll hopefully be able to adopt some continuing resolutions so that we don't have any um unnecessary hiccups or 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 uh uh issues there. But I think that for the most part, right, the county and and other, you know, all of our other partners too that are involved, you know, that have state uh revenue that 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 they receive, will only be able to weather that storm for so long. And I think that's why, again, the twenty five percent fund balance will be able to 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 support certain departments and certain programs for a period of time. Uh, but I was just on a um, I was a panelist on an MSU extension uh budget uncertainty uh call, which was actually, it was very well put on, it was very well attended by, you know, school districts and such like that. But I mentioned school districts because one of the other panelists, he's from the uh vampire and ISD. Um, you know, he kind of talked about uh some of the implications uh that uh ISDs are facing in a, in all school districts that they were supposed to have budgets by uh July first. So they all have fund balances, so similar strategy to what we're employing. They have fund balances, but those will dwindle down and then they can only support that for so long. And they will have to shut their shutter their doors if if the state does not approve a budget. That will not only have impacts, and because I don't have children, I didn't think about this, but that will not only have impacts on, right, school districts, but the uh parents of children now. but the, uh, parents of children now, and as, as you know, we have bear, many parents here in Kalamazoo County, uh, especially working for government, will have to now figure out daycare services or have to take off time from work. And so it has a compounding effect, uh, at all levels and, and that will have, you know, uh, an effect on, you know, county government too, if certain programs aren't funded because continuing resolutions can't support those anymore. You know, for example, in the courts, they may have programs that will have to cease to exist until the state, uh, gets her act together. Uh, and, you know, we also have mandated services we have to provide, like engine defense, for example, and so maybe we can support that for a little bit, but then how do we continue? I mean, that's a, you know, six to ten million dollar operation and the county budget just simply can't support that without the state revenue to, to, to back it. So, um, we've been playing out some scenarios and I think that it's, I think time is of the essence, um, and we can only support them for so long. And I think that most of the, you know, the partners that I've been, uh, kind of talking to have been utilizing, right, that, that fund balance, uh, until the state can replenish that and so that they can move forward. And that's kind of the strategy we're, we're, uh, employing right now.
Nice, Chair.
To add on to that, absolutely. I agree with the twenty-five percent. Um, it's kind of that, I think, we don't have to be faster than the bear. We just have to be faster than the other people running from the bear. And our twenty-five percent is gonna be the, 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 the thing that's gonna happen with these school districts shut down. That's gonna create a political crime, climate that's gonna force Lansing to act. That, that's basically our stopgap. And I, I envision that we won't run out of money until, that'll happen before we run out of money. So we're in good shape. Um, one of the other things I wanted to think, just ask and get, uh, administrations recommendations from are uh, how far we've, or so far how we've done on the things that we did last year, the, the things we put in last year or two years ago, or last year's budget. I think there was, um, the, the, I think we're still waiting on the one for the fair. But then we also have the, uh, uh, childcare and then there was a, what's that? Medical debt as well. So those three things, medical debt, fair and childcare. And that, like, just get a brief update on where we are for our next meeting on that.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. And I have one more question. Being that we know that and say that it does happen and I feel like, um, the games that are being played at the Capitol, they will try to make us suffer for a month or two. Um, are we preparing to have remote options for our county employees? If indeed those that have children, this may impact them.
Sure. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Morales, yes. I mean, we already have telecommuting, uh, a policy, so departments that, uh, you know, already have those on, uh, I guess on, on file, uh, are able to leverage those in cases, but there are some departments that, you know, just won't be able to, to offer that because of the nature of their work. But yes, I mean, we have telecommuting policies and, and departments can leverage those now, uh, should, should the need arise.
Right. Administrator, I appreciate you, the diligence of the team, the recommendation. I think we're poised to be in a position to both support employees, but to be nimble in an uncertain time with the approaches that we've evaluated here. I'm sure as we have an opportunity to dig into the details, maybe we do some fine tweaking around the edges, um, and look forward to discussion on board priorities. Um, but I think, you know, one of the things, um, sort of brought forward in discussion is about that support for strategic planning. And I do want to voice again the support to make sure that when, you know, we've put forth visioning and actioning and we're watching county government, I think, do transformative things in the community. And I think we have some ongoing work, um, that will come forth to the community that will launch additional initiatives that, um, I am hopeful will continue to be transformative. And so really to empower that, to embolden those processes, effectively supporting our strategic plan is an important component of that. So hopefully as we identify other priorities and areas of concern, we get the opportunity to dig into the recommendation a bit further, find tune around some of the edges. Um, I think we have a, a strong initial recommendation in front of us and appreciate, you know, this body, uh, staying focused on the mission at hand, being collaborative and working to get our budget done. Uh, appreciate the comments from prosecutor earlier about a board with differing views that can in fact actually collaborate with one another and get us to a really strong end result. So I want to thank you and to the entire executive team and the finance team, uh, for their work. Anything further this time on budget? Okay. Right. Thank you, Administrator. All right, we're gonna move to item seven. We have a number of things here. We're gonna bring forth first a presentation on funding recommendations from the senior millage allocation from the ad hoc committee. Welcome.
You got it. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, I don't believe we have slides today, so I will be walking you. Oh, fantastic.
Helps bring it up, the slides to see, right?
There we go.
Yeah. We have them on our, um, to view and on our view as well, so.
Wonderful.
Just up for the community.
Wonderful.
Soon as she gets that up, you're good to go.
There we go.
I'll, I'll grab that.
Okay.
Appreciate everyone's patience. Uh, in chambers, we're just working on some technology issues. Yeah, we hope to have those resolved.
And if you would like, for the sake of time, I can start and we can catch the slides up if that's helpful.
That'd be fine. Thank you so much.
Most definitely. Okay. And good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Cassie Bailey. I am with the Area Agency on Aging, or AAA for short. Today I am presenting the recommendations of the Senior Millage Allocation Ad Hoc Committee. Good timing. Um, for contracting out twenty twenty-six Senior Millage Gap Health Support Services Funding. Most definitely. That is coming up. So I'm gonna let them keep working. Okay.
Yep.
Wonderful. There we go. Okay. So yes, Commissioner Gessler, I most definitely will. Um, but first, a brief overview of AAA. Uh, we are dedicated to helping older adults remain independent in their own homes to avoid premature nursing home placement. To do this, AAA coordinates access to a wide range of support services that are funded by federal, state and local senior millage dollars. Services are delivered both directly by AAA and in partnership with community vendors. Um, this twenty twenty-six gap health support services grant opportunity was released through Amplifund. The funding goal, uh, is to address essential services that are either unavailable or insufficient to meet the needs of vulnerable older adults residing in Kalamazoo County. I want to highlight that all allocation decisions were made at open public meetings by the ad hoc committee. Additionally, contracts will cover calendar year twenty twenty-six. This year, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in senior millage funding was available with a maximum request of thirty thousand allowed per application. Only direct service expenses were allowable. Twelve applications were received from eleven unique vendors, including one first time applicant. In total, requests amounted to just over three hundred and five thousand. Because of this difference, it was imperative that the allocation committee made careful, well thought out decisions that were critically prioritized. And I will speak to some of these con- considerations in just a moment. Before deciding conversations were had, the ad hoc committee worked through an established process to ensure the eligibility of applicants. Committee members scored each application individually. The scores were then averaged and applications needed at least seventy points to be considered for funding. All twelve applications met this threshold. For returning organizations, the committee also reviewed past performance, service quality, fiscal accountability and contract compliance. Based on these reviews, the committee recommends awarding all twelve applications. The committee engaged in thoughtful, thorough deliberations before reaching their decisions. Some of the key considerations included alignment with AAA's mission and funding objective, ensuring the greatest community impact possible, addressing service gaps that are most critical to life, commitment to reaching diverse, underserved and marginalized populations, services matching AAA older, AAA's older adult needs survey results, providing data-driven evidence of local need. Additionally, community collaboration and partnerships to maximize resources and avoid service duplication and budget review to ensure requests were reasonable, allowable, outcome-based and free of unnecessary costs or inflated expenses. After carefully weighing these considerations and many others and setting priorities, I believe the following recommended awards are well-balanced and will have the greatest positive impact on our community. Therefore, the Senior Millage Allocation Committee recommends the following awards. First, Comstock Community Center for their memory care center in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred. Comstock will provide participant scholarships for older adults living with dementia to attend their day center. Second, DEF Inc. in the amount of twenty-three thousand for the purchase of hearing aids for older adults who otherwise would not have been financially able to obtain. When not addressed, hearing loss can lead to higher risks of depression, anxiety and other health issues that cannot be effectively communicated. Third, Elder's Helpers in the amount of eight thousand for personal emergency response buttons, which in part reduce emergency response times and help prevent unnecessary hospitalization. As a note, you will see that some vendors have a green asterisk by their name. This means that certain proposed budget components were not selected for funding, but the core services and allowable expenses were approved. The next recommended award is for Guardian Finance and Advocacy's Guardianship Program in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. This program supports incapacitated older adults with guardians to oversee and meet their medical, legal and financial needs to ensure their safe and stable living. Guardian Finance and Advocacy also submitted a second application for their money management program. Uh, this award is being recommended for ten thousand dollars and the service will provide older adults with a counseling service to help them remain financially independent, economically self-sufficient and avoid financial abuse and exploitation. Lending Hands of Michigan for seven thousand. Lending Hands is a durable medical equipment organization that loans out equipment. And this award is for bath transfer benches, shower chairs and stools and raised toilet seats with arms. Next, we have Medical Care Alert in the amount of fifteen thousand. This application will, this funding will provide twenty-four seven monitored emergency response buttons, enabling older adults to continue living independently with help just a button press away. Additionally, Milestone Senior Services in the amount of fifteen thousand. This award will support their pest remediation and hoarding intervention services. These services address the health and safety risks such as infestation, sanitation concerns, fall and fire hazards and potential eviction while helping older adults maintain safe housing and reduce isolation from stigma. Additionally, MRC Industries, Inc. is recommended in the amount of seven thousand five hundred. MRC's is getting a adult day program for older adults with disabilities up and running to build life skills, improve health, socialize and engage in the community. Next, we have Shepherd Center of America. With their award, Shepherd Center will expand their transportation services to increase ride availability and add capacity to transport wheelchairs. They will also extend their service area to include trips to the VA Medical Center in Battle Creek. Tandons Advanced Pharmacy in the amount of twenty-four thousand. This award will provide older adults with financial support for their prescription copays, ensuring they can access their prescribed medications without sacrificing other essential needs like food and housing. And finally, Twelve Baskets Food Pantry. Twelve Baskets is the first time applicant I spoke to and will utilize their award for the development of a community system to identify older adults needing food assistance, coordinate pickup or delivery and also connect clients to other benefits such as SNAP to support their nutritional needs. In closing, the ad hoc committee respectfully recommends board approval of these awards, so contracts may be issued effective January one, twenty twenty-six. These services directly address critical gaps and support AAA's mission of helping older adults live safely and independently at home. And I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cassie. And to members of our commission who've been working on the ad hoc committee, I see Commissioner Gessler, Vice Chair Protem.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good presentation, Cassie. And I want to notice that Bev and Sarah and, uh, Don are in the back there with you and they were in all these meetings and it was an educational process for me, just as it was. But we did this, what, last November or October? Uh, I, I didn't study at the, the foot of Don Cooney, so a lot of social services things are foreign to me, but I'm coming up to speed if I spend enough time with you guys. And, uh, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that this was a, uh, an effort that I came away learning more than I contributed, but that's because I don't know so much to begin with. And I, I appreciate you and Kelly and Tim and the other people that chaired the committee and, uh, you know, it was very well done. So I will do everything to, uh, you know, encourage us to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Vice Chair Protem.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I too want to thank you for this very well thought out and very complete report. Um, you know, and, and this is something that goes countywide. It's not just in one small area. So it, it serves the entire county of Kalamazoo. So, um, I'm very supportive of helping those folks that have reached this part where we can help them and keep them, uh, in their homes and keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Commissioner Mazur.
Thank you. Um, well, I too served on the ad, ad, ad hoc committee and I was so impressed with all the discussions that took place. And I too learned an awful lot about all the services that we offer and I'm very impressed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cassie. We appreciate your time and the work.
Thank you.
You and, and all of our colleagues. Thank you. All right. All right, good stuff. Next, we're gonna move to a discussion on retiree wages. Thank you, Deputy Administrator. All right, so we'll open up. I think we've had, over the last several years, there's been discussion on making adjustment for prior retirees. We know it's been a couple of decades since cost of living increase was considered. Board leadership, over a couple of terms, has engaged in ongoing discussions with stakeholders. We've had actuarial evaluations done of a number of potential considerations. Those were presented within the materials for the board, so we're going to engage in some discussion on our options and opportunities to glean from the commission what direction that we would like to move forward. Administrator Catlin, do you want to provide any information on the actuarial detail that we received, or I can review it as well?
Chair, I absolutely can, yes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, if you would sign. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. So Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Protem, Commissioners, you'd asked for administration and finance to work with the, our actuary, which is GRS, and in consultation too with our retirement investment committee, produced these actuaries for scenarios that you were considering for retirees that are in the system now, so current retirees, and some of those scenarios are, well, all of the scenarios rather, are described within the item report. So what the first scenario was a 1% cost-of-living increase for every year retired, and with all of these scenarios, obviously, they increase the unfunded accrued liability and then also increase employer contribution to the system. You'll notice that with the first two or three scenarios rather in the packet, these were actuaries that were produced last year, and so the latter two proposals that were considered encompassed updated retiree information, so that's why the funded ratios are not the same, because we actually had an actuary, a system actuary completed back in May, so then I had them run the new scenarios with that information, so that's why those numbers are slightly off. So if we were to consider the, probably the first three proposals, we'd need a new actuary to get accurate numbers, but nonetheless, they're accurate for the time that they were ran. So the 1% one-time increase, cost-of-living adjustment for every year retired would decrease, you know, funded ratio from 109% to 105%, unaccrued liability, $7+ million, and the employer contribution would increase by $900,000 per year in perpetuity. They also considered, right, a scenario where it was a 1.5% cost-of-living adjustment for every year retired that would decrease unfund, or the funded ratio from 109% to 102% unfunded accrued liability by $11+ million, and then employer contribution would go up $1.3 million. The one-time 1% for every three years retired would decrease the funded ratio from 109% to 108%, and then unfunded accrued liability by $2.2 million, and then the employer contribution would increase by $272,000 per year. A scenario contemplated increase of a one-time 0.75% for every year retired, so that would decrease our life, or I'm sorry, our funded ratio rather, from 103% to 100%, so 3% decrease, and then unfunded accrued liability by $5.8 million, and then employer contribution would increase by almost $700,000. And then there was a tiered approach that contemplated sort of this idea that equity would play a role in this, so that folks that were retired within a certain range would receive a tiered sort of increase per year retired for one time, so it ranged from 0.35% all the way up to 1.1%, and that scenario would have decreased unfunded liability by 3.2%, or I'm sorry, decreased the funded ratio rather by 3.2%, increased the unfunded accrued liability by about $5.8 million, and then our employer contribution by about $700,000 as well. The board leadership also wanted us to work with our actuary to do something for active employees should any scenario be considered, so for general non-represented employees, increasing the multiplier from 2% to 2.1%, and that would decrease unfunded, or funded ratio rather, from 1.1, 103% to 102%, and then increases the unfunded accrued liability by about $768,000, and the employer contribution would increase by about $205,000. All of these increases and our, you know, contemplation of these would be deducted from our employee benefits fund, which is of course funded by the, it all, is funded by the fringe rate that we calculate per position. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions. As you know, and I've shared this with retiree proponents too, you know, again, and I'm just, you know, sharing this as I'm just the messenger from the Retirement Investment Committee, right, but their recommendation is to not approve this and to instead award the retirees in the system a one-time lump sum amount from the general fund and/or employee benefits fund, whichever would make sense, and not dip into the retirement system. And obviously, with any of these scenarios, because it would contemplate the fringe rate, that has implications on what the board can do in the future with addressing, and as you know, we're talking about budget now and how we can chip away and try to address new funding requests, like even from the courts, for example, we will have even less money to address needs as they arise in the future should you, you know, endeavor to increase any of these benefits. So those are just some of the things that you have to think about as we kind of move forward, and we're happy to answer questions on the fly as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Yes, I asked for the 2.0 to 2.1 to get an actuarial on that as well. My thought process being if we were going to do something for retirees, we should do something for active employees as well. Everybody shares that. My statement is this, I don't think we can afford a full 1% for every year retired. I think, and I think we need to add, if we do anything, we need to add this 2.1%. I'm leaning for the 3/4% per year for retirement. It's going to be tight, but I think we can do it. That with the 2.1 increase, I think they need to go tandem. It's going to increase our operating about $950,000 a year. To do that, we've got a surplus, with a lot of it is in positions, a lot of it's in investment income that's not going to be around forever, and then, but we have a significant expenditures on the horizon. We're about to go into closed session and possibly discuss, or come out maybe, and we'll see where we're at after that discussion, but we might have some really big payments to make, $3 to $4 million a year on bond payments if we do a new building, if we're going to be borrowing the type of money we're talking about. So I would strongly urge this board to not get over the $1 million a year increase. Don't go over that because we can't afford to, and we, and I do believe strongly that we need to put the 205 in there, the 2.1%, so 205 of that for our current employees. So that leaves, the best option is the 0.75. That's tight for me. That's about as far as I'm willing to go, but I'm willing to go that far, at 3/4% per year.
Commissioner Kissler.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. I am willing to hear more discussion, but right now, I come down on the side of the Pension Investment Committee. That's a lot of real financial knowledge there, and I hate to dismiss it out of hand. And that said, I would like to enlighten everybody with what is an actuary. It's someone that wanted to be an accountant but didn't have the personality.
Thank you. So, you know, they worked through the number based on a set of assumptions for us, and they worked through them in a very conservative set of assumptions. I think that's also important, you know, the valuation that they do for us is done in a way that is quite cautious, and there's certainly circumstances where they could not have been cautious enough, but there are circumstances also where they could have underevaluated the performance. I think the Retirement Investment Committee's recommendation is an important one, but not the only. Commissioner Delu.
Excuse me, a question I asked before. Do we know the percentage of people that this would affect, or how many are collecting social security in addition to their county pension?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that off the top of my head. Yeah, I'll have to ask staff. I don't even know if we would know that information, but I can ask HR.
I mean, we could, we can make some assumptions based on the age range of the retiree pool, which we do have a sense of what the age range is. So with that, we may not know exactly, but we could have a general sense of that. Do we have any other over here before I go back to Commissioner Kissler?
Yes, I hadn't even thought about the social security issue, but if indeed things happen the way they look like they're headed with social security not going to be taxed anymore, that's a pretty good bump for a lot of people anyway.
Yeah, that is a consideration. Another for me, you know, when we think through the priority we've set as a commission, and I think we all deeply believe in supporting employees, and employees are not just people working today in my view, but they are people who've worked for us and built county government in the past. And, you know, just like the employees sitting around here today, if we are not mindful and make adjustments, what I hope will be on a routine basis, which then would not be as costly as what we're looking at now, but otherwise, we're watching their benefit really just turn into dust in front of them. It loses tremendous purchasing power over time, and so walking away at retirement feeling like you have some security that dwindles quite quickly. And one of the things we see about other prominent defined benefit programs like social security is that they are afforded a very modest cost of living increase each year. One of the things negotiated in the past were reductions to what we call the multiplier. So this is a five-year, I think it's five years, maybe it's three-year average, the employee's wage, that that is then subject to a multiplier to help to define the pension benefit that they'll receive, and there were reductions in that. And so we can increase that and address current employees right now, knowing that we see the need for that secure retirement, we're committed to funding it. And then I would challenge this board, you know, I am also strongly comfortable with a 0.75 reduction. I think it makes more sense than a tiered approach. It's easier for our finance team to administer. I think it's affordable at this point. We do have headwinds, and we may need to adjust the fringe rate. We reduced that in last year's budget to afford us some resources to, you know, prioritize other issues with, and we may need to increase that fringe rate. We'll see how our retirement fund performs, the investments, how they perform. But, you know, we're fully funded at this point. That's a circumstance many governments, you know, had to walk away from defined benefits or are not fully funded. This will leave us in that same secure position, but take a benefit that dwindled over time for our retirees and give them back dignity, particularly, you know, thinking of our lower-wage employees, you know, that benefit is a critical component of survival for folks, and I always think most about that, the people struggling at the margins. We have employees now that are struggling to afford housing as working adults, and then you add into that a defined benefit that lost its buying power as a senior, as your healthcare costs escalate. We can do something about that. I think we can afford to. Other thoughts?
Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
So to answer Chair, Commissioner Delu's question, so in our, in our system, we have 710 active employees within the system, and then, you know, active, like actual working that are still working, not retired, retired members in our system is 410. The average age is 72.4, so theoretically, most of those individuals in the system currently are eligible for social security and should be collecting benefits if not.
Commissioner Delu.
I guess so. My point is this retirement benefit is not their only source of income, so, and which social security does increase every year.
Vice Chair.
One, I think there was a Western grad named Brad Kent who wrote a story about retirement income, and it was published nationally about a three-tiered system with you need, you need three, you need your investments that you personally saved, you need your social security, and then you also need a benefit, a defined benefit of some kind or some sort of pension plan. So really, you need reactive sources of income to retire comfortably, but that's a, that was a long read from a while ago. But my question actually has to do with our employee benefit fund. Looking at the report that we've got, we've got about 11.2 in our employee benefit fund. It went from fiscal year '22 at 6.8 to fiscal year at the end of '24, 11.2. So we've had an increase of about $5 million into that employee benefit fund. Now, a lot of that had to do with money that we put in there for childcare, we put in there for TriShare, we put in there for other things. We are going to have to, probably not next year, within a couple of years, we're going to have to increase our fringe rate. I mean, that's, that's going to happen as healthcare costs go up, and regardless, if we do this or if we don't do this, I mean, it's just going to push our fringe rate increase up maybe a year or two. But if we do go forward with a retiree change and a multiplier change, we'll probably be pushing our fringe rate up a year before than we normally would. That being said, I think we can afford that if we keep it under $1 million a year. The Retire Investment Committee, that is their job, just quite frankly, it wouldn't, if they gave any other answer, "But don't do this," they wouldn't be doing their job. They're, now, our job is to how do we budget for it? Do we want to continue to have 100%, 100-some percent funded every single year? I would like to keep it closer to 100 and then actually increase the benefits to the individuals that paid into it. That's my sense, and I do agree with the Chair. There are a lot of conservative assumptions that are put in there, 3.25 every year increase. We usually give three. We did give four one year, but usually it's three, two and a half. I don't see us be giving four very often, but I'm good with 3/4%. And, you know, I think I'll, is a motion in order, Chair, or should we discuss it for more?
Well, I think what would be in order, Vice Chair, we need some consensus from the board. We've heard, you know, some commentary from some of our members. I think having consensus, we could consider then moving a motion at a prior meeting. Typically, we're not moving from the floor, though certainly a member has a prerogative to do so if they so choose. Counsel.
You've said it, Madam Chair. I would like the opportunity to at least maybe consider if this needs to be put into a resolution so that your statement is clear on the record, and we'd like to bring it back at, if not the next meeting, appropriate meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel. Commissioner Wheeler.
I'd be amenable to the 0.75 increase.
I believe I'm seeing consensus, not unanimity, but I am seeing generally support Commissioner Kissler.
Thank you again, Chair. I'm going to have to get a new one of these printed. I'm starting to wear this one out. We really do need to prioritize, guys. We can't be everything to everybody all the time. We really do need to prioritize, guys. We can't be everything to everybody all the time. And, you know, let's, let's consider where the other places are that we're spending money. We're not to the point where we're spending like drunken sailors. And that gives sailors a bad reputation, but seems to me we, we keep pressing on with, on all fronts to increase our spending. We need to think about that, I think, more than we do now.
Okay. I think we've exhausted discussion. At this point, we'll have it come forward again for final resolution and discussion. At a future date and time, direction for administration is to work through the required documentation for a point seven-five increase with a 2.1 multiplier for current employees, and then we'll have the opportunity again to debate and take a final vote. Okay? All right. Thank you all for that discussion. Let's move to review of revised Advisory Board interview questions. So this should be pretty brief. I mean, the Board Appointments Committee, you know, we, we slog through lots of application reviews and interviews. We've just asked to refine and the questions a bit just to make them a little bit easier to understand and to flow a bit better. They need to come here for support, so we'll ask for those to come forward at a future regular meeting agenda, and we will put them into work. All right. We also have first reading of a few items included within the packet. We had a resolution opposing the House of Representatives fiscal '26 budget cuts to county revenue sharing. We've had some discussion through our budget process about the potential impacts of that. And so I'm thankful with collaboration from Michigan Association of Counties and administration that we'll advance that this evening for a final vote at our regular session. There's a proclamation proclaiming September as National Service Dog Month. Who doesn't love a service dog? And then proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month as well. Right? Any questions or comments on those items? All right. At this time, we are slated for a closed session. Commissioner Wheeler is always Johnny on the spot. Thank you, Commissioner Wheeler, for your motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the Board of Commissioners go into a closed session pursuant to Section 8D of MCL 15.268, the Opening Meetings Act, for the purpose of consideration, excuse me, of considering the purchase or lease of real property.
Motion made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Gisler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler? Commissioner Mazur?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Straps?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu?
Yeah.
Nine yes.
That motion carries. We will move adjourned closed session.